Two wants.
Good evening. My name is Tom Kendall and I will be chairing the meeting tonight as Mrs. Baker is unable to be here. This is Monday, April 1st at 7:00 PM. Will you please silence your cellphones and all rise for the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance? Dear Heavenly Father, please be with this group tonight as we think about the city business. Be with us in our community as we press forward into the weeks to come as we head into the great season of Easter. Be with us, be with our, all the first responders and those who are protecting us out of the country and making sure that we are safe and we can live under the freedoms that we have come to know and love. In his name we pray, amen. Please draw me to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Oda.
I move to excuse Mrs. Oda.
Mr. Heath.
Here.
Mr. Severt.
Here.
Mr. Kendall.
Prematurely here.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mr. Lutz.
Here.
Mr. Twiss.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Present.
Mr. Swazer.
Here.
Now, Mr. Severt.
Mrs. Oda called. She could not be here and I would move to excuse her.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Severt and a second by Mr. Phillips. Please call the roll.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda is excused.
Okay, Mrs. Knight, will you please read a summary of the minutes of March 18th, 2019?
Minutes of Council, March 18th, 2019. Committee reports Law and Ordinance Committee, recommended legislation be prepared, accepting final plat and dedication of right-of-way for Halifax Estates subdivision, Section 5. Also for the final plat and dedication of right-of-way for Heritage of the Troy Country Club subdivision and for the final plat of the Reserve at Washington, Section 1 subdivision. Committee recommended legislation be prepared, accepting final plat, final development plan of the Villas of Halifax subdivision plan development. Streets and sidewalks, committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing agreement with first place, for the first-place parking lot of the First United Methodist Church for employee of City Hall parking, and that was also discussed. Resolution number R-12, 2019, agreement with First United Methodist Church was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-7, 2019, final plat Halifax Estates, Section 5, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-8, 2019, final plat Heritage of the Troy Country Club subdivision, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-9, 2019, accepting Reserve at Washington, Section 1 subdivision, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-10, 2019, final record plan of Villas of Halifax plan development, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-11, 2019, amending ordinances related to limited-time parking and ending moratorium, first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:35 PM.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes as read. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Heath and a second by Mr. Twiss to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Okay, now we'll move to committee reports and the first reports will be from the Finance Committee. This committee met on March 25th to consider authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to enter into a fiscal year 2019 CHIP partnership agreement. This is a grant application program for qualifying LMI, extensive home rehabilitation and smaller home repair projects. Only by being a party to the partnership agreement can rehabilitation or repair projects in Troy be included for any CHIP funds awarded. It is recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into the fiscal year 2019 CHIP program partnership agreement between the Miami County Board of Commissioners, the City of Pickla, Ohio, the City of Tip City, Ohio, and the City of Troy, Ohio, for the Ohio Development Services Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program. As the county must conduct public hearings and then finalize grant agreements by May 3rd, consideration of emergency legislation is requested so that the county will know that Troy will be included in the program. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Severt, and myself as Chair of Finance Committee. Are there any questions, comments? Okay. Second report, on March 25th, this committee met to consider authorizing the city to participate in the bid of the Ohio Department of Transportation for road salt to be included. Specific legislation must be enacted and presented to ODOT no later than April 19th so that ODOT is aware of the quantities to be included in their bid. It is recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the City of Troy to participate in the ODOT cooperative purchasing program for the purchase of road salt. Based on the date established by ODOT to be included in the ODOT program, we support this item as emergency legislation. And this too is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Severt, and myself as Chair of Finance. So are there any questions or comments regarding this report? All right, if not, we will move on to Utilities Committee and Mr. Twilliger.
Thank you. On March 18th, this committee met to consider declaring a public purpose, a project that would involve moving utility poles off of an area of the Great Miami River levee and relocating the telecommunication lines to existing poles on the south side of West Water Street. The cost of the project would be shared by the city and the two developers. The removal of the poles, relocation of the line serves, it serves a public purpose as the project will promote the community's health, safety, and welfare by removing potential obstructions, intrusions, and complications to the city's primary flood protection system as well as by promoting economic development of the downtown riverfront corridor. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared declaring this project as a public purpose and authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to make payments to Frontier Communications in an amount not to exceed $45,000 for the removal of the poles and lines from the area of the Great Miami River levee described in the detailed report and relocating the telecommunication lines to the south side of West Water Street. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Lutz, Mr. Twiss, and myself, Mr. Twilliger as Chair.
Okay, are there any questions, comments regarding this report? All right, seeing none, there are no more committee reports, so we will move to citizen comments on committee reports or agenda items for tonight in that the comments will have a two-minute limit and that will be monitored by Mr. Kerber. So please come forward, state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to resolutions and Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-13, 2019?
Resolution number R-13, 2019, resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in 2019 and declaring an emergency. This is an emergency as participation needs to be indicated to ODOT by April 19th, first reading.
Okay, are there any questions?
Move for suspension.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion for suspension by Mr. Phillips and a second by Mr. Heath. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion for adoption by Mr. Phillips and a second by Mr. Twilliger. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the roll?
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Okay, Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R-14, 2019?
Resolution number R-14, 2019, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into the PY 2019 CHIP program partnership agreement by and between the Miami County Board of Commissioners, the City of Pickla, Ohio, and the City of Tip City, Ohio, and the City of Troy, Ohio, for the Ohio Development Services Administration, ODSA, Community Housing Impact and Preservation CHIP program and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading. This is emergency as the county must hold public hearings on the application by May 3rd and we must let the county know that Troy would be part of that. First reading.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Knight. Are there any questions or comments regarding this legislation?
Move for suspension.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion for suspension from Mr. Phillips and a second from Mr. Heath. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the roll?
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Okay, we, okay, all right, we have a motion for Mr. Swazer and a second for Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the roll?
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R-15, 2019?
Resolution number R-15, 2019, resolution declaring as a public purpose, a project to relocate telecommunication lines from the Great Miami River levee adjacent to areas of West Water Street and authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to make payment to Frontier Communications for said project. City's cost would not exceed $45,000, first reading.
Okay, are there any questions, comments?
Move for suspension.
Second.
Okay, we, we have a motion for suspension, Mr. Phillips, and a second from Mr. Twiss. Mrs. Knight, please read the roll.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion for adoption from Mr. Phillips and a second by Mr. Swazer. Mrs. Knight, would you please read the roll?
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Now we move to ordinances and Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-12, 2019.
Ordinance number O-12, 2019, ordinance changing the zoning of Vin lot 10858 in the City of Troy, Ohio, from the county zoning districts of R1 AAA, One Family Residential District, and A1 Domestic Agricultural District, to the city zoning of R4 Single Family Residential District. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. It is 10.284 acres on Peters Road. We'll have a public hearing at the next council meeting, first reading.
So we will, we will address this in the next meeting. Seeing that no other ordinances come before, we will move to Mrs. Knight. Is there any correspondence?
Only the reminder about filing of financial disclosure statements. Deadline is coming.
Okay, Mayor Beamish.
Just one thing, and I think a lot of us are already familiar, that the Great Miami Riverway is being hosted here in Troy, Ohio. It's a regional effort and it'll be at the Troy Hobart Arena. Right now, I think we have close to 40 vendors that'll be there. It showcases the power of the river in this region and the things that can happen with the ribbon, River. Troy Foundation is the signature sponsor, so they've supported this endeavor. There is a cost, it's $15, but that includes lunch, so that'll be good. If you're interested, the easiest way to sign up is to go to thegreatmiamiriverway.com and you can sign up. But it looks like a great day. It'll be on April, Friday, April 19th, from 8:00 in the morning to 1:00 in the afternoon, so maybe a lot of you would like to see that event.
To add to that, the keynote speaker is from Colorado and right now, Mr. Kegley, we're what, close to 200 people already? Or over that?
Over 150.
150, okay. All right, expecting about 200, so, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Tetterington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
Mr. Chair, I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay. City Auditor, Mr. Frege.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing at this time.
Okay. I do have a statement I would like to read, read tonight, and, and I've already given a copy to Mrs. Knight. I saw an article last week regarding the Los Angeles California Fire Department and their recent equipping of every on-duty firefighter with a handheld thermal imaging camera called a TIC. Previously, the department, this is in LA, carried just one. They had one large TIC on each fire engine that cost upwards to $10,000. These new TICs are the size of a smartphone, believe it or not, and they cost only $750. It offers the firefighters the ability to perform faster search and rescues, execute a self-rescue if required, and locate, and locate smoldering hotspots. The Los Angeles Fire Department Chief calls these new TICs game changers for the department when they are working in extremely hazardous conditions. After doing some further research on these units, I felt these would be a great tool for our own Troy firefighters, especially if it improves safety and helped rescue others. I advised Mr. Titterington that I wanted these for Troy's firefighters and asked him to discuss with Chief Simmons as to his interest. According to Patrick, Chief Simmons would like to have these but believes we would need only seven or eight units. By this note, I am asking Mr. Titterington to either find the $6,000 in the budget, apply for a grant, or find a funding source for eight of the TIC units for Troy's Fire Department, which will provide us with even greater safety potential. So, and this is signed by myself, Tom Kendall, and it was dated March 26th. So, are there any other comments from any other council people? Okay, any city staff? Anyone in the audience? Give your name and address, please.
Andrew Learn, 918 Wheeler Street. Dear council members and city staff, I want the council to be more approachable. I want the citizens of Troy to feel comfortable in bringing their sincere concerns in question to the city council. I want the council to be more receptive and inviting to the public. Addressing the council is difficult for most people. You are all in positions of power and seated at a raised dais. I have a law degree. As a paralegal in legal system, I communicate with people in positions of power and negotiate with banks on behalf of clients. I've had opportunities and experiences that have given me a voice, and as you can see, I'm a white man. Nonetheless, I quiver, my voice shakes when I address the council. I fear that some of the citizens of Troy have less, with less education, opportunities, and time than myself, will never address the city council out of fear that their voices will not be heard, no matter how good their ideas and concerns may be. This, of course, would be a shame, but unfortunately, most likely is the current state of affairs. I want the council to lead with love. Two weeks ago, after I questioned the council on the premise of spending nearly $100,000 of taxpayer money to provide free parking for well-paid city employees and relatively wealthy members of the Chamber of Commerce, I had the good fortune of meeting Mr. Ray Westfall, who's in the audience today. Mr. Westfall left the meeting at the same time I did. Mr. Westfall informed me that he'd been trying to get the city to build a parking garage for years. He also told me, when we were up there, speaking, a council member texted me and asked, "Who is this guy?" meaning me. "Did you pay him to say these things?" Regretfully, I failed to ask Mr. Westfall, which council person texted him this comment. Mr. Westfall and I continued to speak and ultimately, he showed me the new bank space he's renovating. I wish him the best of luck in his business endeavors. I was not until I spoke to others about what Mr. Westfall said to me. I did not understand the ramifications of the council person's jocular text. To the council, I say this. When I approached the council, I do so as a concerned citizen, not as a businessperson. I have neither the private cellphone numbers of council members nor any of them texting me about city business. To the member that sent this text to Mr. Westfall, I'd say that by sending this text, you give the impression that a wealthy businessperson is more important than an ordinary citizen. Such perceptions are not good for the health and prosperity of the city or the government. Addressing the council's heart, please make yourselves more approachable and please carry yourselves with the dignity demanded by your elected position. Listen to the citizens with an open heart and mind and make decisions in a manner that is receptive to sincere community input. Councilman Phillips, two weeks ago, you glibly announced that in an abundance of caution, I am abstaining from voting on this contract with the First Methodist Church, First United Methodist Church. This announcement elicited some giggles from the chamber as well as a few of your fellow council members. To you, I say, it was not an abundance of caution that led you to abstain from voting on this particular issue, but rather your position as a city council member and trustee of the church that created an actual conflict of interest and you are duty-bound to abstain from voting, lest you run afoul of your ethical commitment to the city. I am harping on this parking issue because I believe it's an egregious misuse of taxpayer dollars. Back in November, I read in the newspaper that Ted Zimmerman, treasurer of the Lincoln Community Center, is arguing overfunding with the city for the LCC, an institution that serves 60,000 people a year. In March, I read in the newspaper that the city is going to provide free parking spaces for 30-some employees and six Chamber of Commerce members and pay a church nearly $100,000 for the privilege when it is already free for these same employees to park on the street. As a member of the community, these scenarios do not make any sense to me. As a member of this community, I have bigger concerns as well. I'll leave you with two of them. What is the city doing to move the state along in this cleanup of the toxic plume on the east side of Troy? And how is the city going to ensure that the new Kennedy Hospital plays nice and not push its own agenda over and above the needs of the community? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Laurie.
Mr. President, can I, can I address one question to the, to the resident? I mean, Mr. Laurie, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, we've started having quarterly open house meetings at the library. You know, I know that I try to be as open and as approachable, and I know I've seen other council members be open and approachable as well. If you have recommendations on what we can consider to do, I am more than willing to take your advice under consideration.
Mr. Lutz, I appreciate the candor. I know that I've sent a couple of recommendations to this council. One on, there's a, there's a movement in the country where they allow smoking for individuals that are 18 years and older, but they prohibit it unless it's purchasing it unless you're 21. The only response I got is from, is from Mr. Swazer, and he spoke to me in person. I've also addressed the council regarding the Quiet Rails System, federal program that's available for the city to pursue. I think that there's an article written that too long ago in the Troy newspaper. But there really truly is a public health hazard with the individuals that live along the radio tracks, and that's something that could be done. So I have given recommendations on how the city could better conduct stuff. And quite frankly, like it or not, my wife and I are exactly who the city wants to be here. We both live in San Francisco and Chicago. We're young, we're going to be committed here. We are the young people that you want in your community, sir.
And I do not disagree with, with that sentiment at all. I was more looking for recommendations on what this council can do to improve communication.
Well, I mean, do you care to comment on this, this alleged text that occurred?
I was not a party to that text. I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, I just explained to you what I said, so do you want me to explain it again?
No, 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 excuse me.
You understand how that might make people feel?
I can completely understand.
And they wouldn't feel very good about that, right?
I can understand that.
Okay.
All I'm saying is that, you know, this council has taken efforts to improve communication. If there are ways in which we can communicate better with residents, I would like to know what those are, and I'm always open to have that conversation with you or any other resident of this community.
And I'm having that conversation with you now, councilman. That's why I'm here. This is the open comment season, and this is why I'm here, to communicate with you my, my concerns and fears for the city of Troy. And it's a wonderful place to live, don't get me wrong. But I, as I said, I think that there's a cold reception here at times, and I do know that things get resolved in committee, not here. So by the time that business is brought to the public's purview, unless you're hyper vigilant, everything's already been decided in committee. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that, and I would also say that, you know, the, the amount of communication from this building and from individual council members, I have seen increase more over the last three to six months than I have previous to that time.
Well, kudos over those three to six months, but I'm talking about, we're talking about years, sir. I mean, come on, good job, keep it up, keep doing it.
I can completely understand what you're saying, but I've only been on council for 15 months.
Okay, so why didn't the increased communication start 15 months ago?
Well, I believe it has, I believe it has.
You just said three to six months ago, sir.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Lester Connor, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. I applaud this gentleman here. I wish more citizens would come to this council meeting. I, I regret that the citizens don't seem to take an interest in what's going on. My daddy always told me that the easiest way to keep people out of, out of your money is to not, not, not take your billfold out of your back pocket. Well, here in Troy, it seems like we're always taking our money and our billfold out for the city. I'm now paying $38.90 on my water and sewer bills with, with everything else that's come along. And it started out as a, as a minimum, we weren't even supposed to be raised. But now, Mr. Titterton has changed that to where even the people using minimum are in, subject to raises. So I went from $13 a month to $38.90. I mean, and that's just one issue of that. But I mean, I wish more citizens would come up here and express themselves because you people don't get any opposition. You, 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 over a period of time, I think you, you just get the feeling like, well, we can do anything and everything that we want. And that's sad. Now, Mr. Lutz, I mean, yes, he's going and having those meetings, and I was, when he first started. first started, I come to the podium, and he sent me a letter in the mail saying, "Thank you for coming to the podium and everything." And I appreciate, that was the only guy that's ever done that to me. But, you know, I mean, I think Mr. Lutz, and I think they're trying, and I think that some of the people on the council are seeing things through different eyes, and that's good. But some are still in the fog of railroad tunnel and suffocation and, you know, making some people happy, and that's sad. But I thank this gentleman here, and I wish there was more in Troy doing the same thing for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Connor.
Mr. Chair, I think just a comment to Lester's comment. There are many citizens, I think, that do communicate via email with their councilmen or call them. I have many calls with them, my constituents, that might not be able to make the meeting. So I do want to encourage the citizens and those that have done it to continue to do it on that. But I get called quite frequently on many different topics within the city, or email.
Right, and I don't have a computer, so I don't know anything about all that stuff. But I do know from past experiences up here at the council meeting, when people have complaints, that the answer to them is, "We'll get back with you." And I don't know how many times I've heard them say, "They never get back with us. They never get back with us. Playing games, playing games." And I've said it before up here, and you know I've said it. This kind of stuff has got to stop, and you've got to know who's paying your wages. We are paying your wages, you're not paying ours. And you people, a lot of you, not all of you, have forgotten this. All I can think about is the city of Troy, not the citizens and the city.
Amy Shannon, 1560 Windbridge Place, Apartment D. I want to start with a thank you to Robins, not here, but also to Bill Lutz. They are ones, I'm very active on Facebook, they're ones that I see frequently in groups that are Troy, Ohio-based, that are commenting to people, talking to people. But I do want to kind of reiterate the comments that are being made. I don't know, maybe we're having a come-to-Jesus moment. There's a whole lot of people out there who are saying they do not feel that they can come here. They do not feel that they will be heard. They do not feel that they've been heard in previous times. And I'm going to give you a personal, you guys know I spent about two years coming up to this podium about every single meeting, and approximately half of you would never make any type of eye contact with you, with me. At least one rolled his eyes every single time I approached. And it is very off-putting, and it got to the point where I no longer felt like I could come to council meetings because I literally left here so frustrated. Not because people disagreed with me, because people aren't going to agree, I'm not always going to win my arguments, but I felt like I was treated like dirt frequently from the podium. So I would like to encourage that this is something that's truly thought about, because personal experience, been there, done that. And again, there are a couple that are working to make some changes, and I appreciate that. And I think they are making some headway, but it would be really nice to see everybody doing that.
Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you for your attendance, and have a peace-filled week. Thank you. Me and...